...in 2019. I'm going to read the public hearing on the proposed budget for April for 2019 and 2020. This public hearing is being conducted to consider comments and questions from interested citizens regarding the proposed 2019 and 20 fiscal year operation budget. The proposed budget for expenditures and revenues is $1,022,514. The town tax rate is proposed to remain at .35 cents per 100 of full value assessment of property in the town of Union Bridge. The town personal property tax is proposed to remain at .75 per 100 of assessed value. The public hearing is advertised in the Carroll County Times on Monday, April the 8th, 2019. Are there any comments or questions? All right, hearing done. This public hearing, this public meeting is closed. We'll start this meeting by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion for it to approve operating statements for March 25th, 2019, the council meeting minutes and on the March 25th, closed session minutes, April 8th, 2019 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for March 2019.
I'll make a motion that we approve the operating statements, March 25th, 2019, council meeting minutes, March 25th, 2019, closed session minutes, April 8th, 2019, work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for March 2019.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
No, there is opposed. Okay, so, all right. We'll move back here to the budget again. The budget ordinance of 314-C fiscal year 2019 and 2020, budget for expenditures and revenues of $1,022,514, with the town tax rate to remain at .35 per 100 of full value assessment of property in the town of Union Bridge. The town personal property tax will remain at .75 per 100 of assessed value. Okay, do we have a motion to accept this budget?
I'll make a motion that we accept budget ordinance number 314-C fiscal year 2019, 2020, budget for expenditures and revenues of $1,022,514, with the town tax rate to remain at 35 cents per $100 of full value assessment of property in the town of Union Bridge. The town personal property tax rate will remain at 75 cents per $100 of assessed value.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved. All right, moving right along here. We have the RFP for water and wastewater. Independent contractor was advertised for bid on Friday, the March 15th, 2019, on Monday, March 18th, 2019, the Carroll County Times. Bids were submitted for a three-year period with option to renew for the second and third year bids. The town received one bid for our environmental operations, our current contractor, an amount of first year bid of 2019 slash 20, $52,416, no increase from last year, with option to renew for 20 slash 21, second year, $53,726.40, with a $1,310.40 increase. Third year for 21 slash 22, third year would be $53,726.40, no increase from second year. And I need a motion to approve this environmental operations bid.
I make a motion that we approve the environmental operations bid for O&M independent operator for the town's water and wastewater treatment facilities for fiscal years 19 and 20, an amount of $52,416, with the option to renew for the second and third year at the proposed prices.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, down in the mayor's report, Perry wanted, we went, Perry, myself, and John, our lawyer, and Dawn, we went down to, and we had a meeting on March the 29th, in Baltimore with MDE, and also was attending Marty Hill and the Warmall developers. On April 3rd, Perry had a meeting at the county office building to prepare for a meeting with the state, county, and federal officials about flooding. On April 10th, he had a town manager's luncheon. On April 13th, he attended another meeting, MML, in Annapolis. On April 16th, he had a meeting with the county and state officials at Union Bridge Far Hall about flooding. And also on April 16th, he attended the Union Bridge Fire Company ladies auxiliary and presented a recognition from the town of Union Bridge. On April 17th, he had another meeting at the MML office in Annapolis. And see, remainder of the week, April 24th, he had a WRCC meeting at the county office building, and April 27th, he had another meeting at the MML office in Annapolis. Okay, had a lot of meetings. So that brings us to, speaking of the mayor, he wanted an increase, and, no, you have that, don't you, John? Yeah, okay. All right, that's pretty much covers the mayor's report. So, John, you want to carry it from there?
Okay, very good. Before you, you have resolution number 0219, which was introduced last month at your regular meeting, and it proposed to increase the salary for the office of mayor to $2,400 per year payable in equal monthly installments of $200 per month, and to increase the compensation for each special or committee meeting to $40. There has not been any change in the resolution as it was introduced last month, so it's up for discussion and adoption. I would only add that it applies only to the office of mayor after the upcoming election.
Right, okay. I have a motion that we want to increase the mayor's salary for $2,400 per year and 40, move it up to $40 per meeting.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number O2-19, mayor's salary to increase the mayor's salary.
Are there a second?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so, carry it.
Do you have the original answer and the sign? And we'll pass that around for signatures.
I'll get Perry's signature.
All right, second item under my time is the Citizens' UB solar project. You are all aware that as of April 12th, Citizens filed an amended plan which pulled the solar panels back out from within the town, and they now sort of ring around the outer perimeter in Carroll County but outside the town. And I know that's, it's a long and involved document that they've sent, and you've probably had a chance generally to look at it, but it's pretty much as simple as that. I mean, a lot of the background information in that plan is pretty much the same, it just reflects the studies that they've done, and it shows the panels having been pulled back outside the town. You may also know that there was a question when we met last month as to the payment of the open invoices from Citizens. They were paid since then, but at this point, Citizens takes a position that since the plan has been moved outside of town, that they don't feel they're obligated to pay the town's costs involved in continuing on. At this point, I don't know that that's entirely correct when you look at the plan. There's little, there are parts of the plan that are still in town. There's fencing, there's an access road, so all that needs to be sort of looked at and worked on. One of the reasons that I wanted to talk to you tonight was that, I guess we need to, I need to know, and this, because this is a legal matter and the Public Service Commission proceeding is a legal proceeding, we can go into closed session to discuss it if you feel comfortable doing that. But before you make that decision, I talked to Ned Cuman today because Ned would be the person who would be making the statement about consistency with the master plan. Of course, that analysis changes because of the change in the plan, but there still seems to be some question as to whether this is, whether it is consistent with the master plan, the way they propose it. So there's still going to be the opportunity to file testimony in opposition to the case. It's unclear right now whether eventually the site plan would be a joint site plan with the county and the town, because some of the use is in the town, not much, but some. And all, or nearly all of the areas that are proposed for panels are in what's called the future annexation area under the town's comprehensive plan, which is interesting in that the town was looking to annex the additional land before they changed the plan. So one of the questions is, does the town still desire annexing the plan that's still in the county, but it's, it's an area that the town would have been annexing when they moved, you know, when they had the panels inside and outside the town limits? So that's one question. I understand there's been some discussion about the five acres and the one acre, the five acres being future land for the stormwater management plant, and the one acre for the, I'm sorry, for the wastewater treatment plant, and the one acre for the stormwater management project that the county is, has been working on. And of course, that's not on the table at the moment because they've pulled the project back outside of the town limits. However, we have not taken a position on that. I have not responded to their amended filing, and that's something that we need to do. And by the end of the month, we will, the project will get back on a schedule with the Public Service Commission, and right now, what the applicant wanted as of the weeks before they filed the actual plan was that they wanted the town's direct testimony, which is basically the written testimony under oath from Mr. Cuman by June 21st. And again, I talked to him today, and I don't think that's a problem, that's 60 days, and knowing that we're already very familiar with the project, it should not be difficult to get to that point. They are then proposing the second public hearing on June 26th, which, my impression of that is, that's a little quick, because not only do we file our direct testimony on behalf of the town by the 21st, but, but the state agency also files. It would be nice to have a little more space to, to be able to absorb that, read it, and understand what the other agencies are saying. And then the applicant is, is looking for an evidentiary hearing by July 2nd, which is only about a week after the second public hearing. So my sense is that we probably are fine with the June 21st date, we probably want a little more time. And the other practical issue is that you all don't meet every day, so it's not like, you know, ordinarily, I have a client, I can call the client and get an answer within a day or two, but I need to wait until you all either have a work session or a meeting when you're together to give me direction. So we need a little more time than the, and plus, we've got an intervening election, which, you know, may or may not come into play here as well. So I assume you're all right with me kind of figuring out the timing on all that?
Yes, we pretty much discussed that in work session, I do.
Okay, but in terms of our position on this, I need to get a sense, are we in opposition to this? Are we, I understand we'd like to get the land, and, you know, that's one thing, but what is our position on their application? And, you know, how do we, how aggressively do we pursue that? And we really need to know, because when we're working up this direct testimony for Mr. Cuman, we need to know how, well, we need to express the town's position on the project as amended.
Well, I think in their work session, correct me if I'm wrong, that we wanted to proceed with them in negotiations if we can, even though we're outside of the town limits, they're going to be outside the town limits, we're still interested in getting the land for our treatment plant and possibly annex it also.
Okay, but what, what is their incentive to do that?
Probably, what their incentive is?
Yeah.
Not much.
Well, I mean, their incentive is, if the town is opposing this, you know, we still are a stakeholder in all of this.
Right.
Which doesn't really change things that much. I mean, the plan has changed, but...
Do we have, what leverage do we have?
Well, again, Mr., you're, this project is in the future annexation area. I mean, this is all a little preliminary right now because we're digesting what they've done, but, you know, take the position that this needs to be annexed. Any development that comes in our future annexation area should be annexed. The pilot aspect of it, where that's going to generate a lot of tax, is not as significant, but there would be some tax benefit to the town, but it would also give the town some control over that land, not only for this project, but, but forever. And typically, I mean, if you look at the developments that we have, Jackson Ridge, the villages, they were annexed. I mean, it's, the town's position was that, that if you want to come in and develop around the town, we want to control that development.
So this is something that actually needs to be done in closed session, I think.
You want to defer it to...
Yeah, we can. That's what you all want to do.
Okay.
Till the end of the meeting, go in closed session?
Like the way we did it last month. Okay, well, then we'll, I think that's, then we'll skip through that issue until the end. All right, well, then the next matter under my time is proposed ordinance number 314. That's the ordinance that would allow, as a principal permitted use, brewery, microbrewery, pub brewery, micro distillery, micro winery, and coffee roasting in the BG district, which you'll recall, you got a presentation from Mr. Stanbaugh last month. His property is in the BG district, so this would allow for that particular proposal to go forward without having to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It would be a use as a matter of right. While the town is at it, it also proposes to have those uses allowed in the BL district, which are much closer to residential properties. They're more of, on the, the south side of the railroad tracks along Main Street is more the BL, and in the industrial district, which kind of rings around the residential. Those would be required to go to Board of Zoning Appeals case to assess whether it was appropriate in those locations. This has been recommended by the planning commission in the form that you have it before you, and it's up just for introduction tonight. It would then be scheduled for a hearing next month. But I will mention this, and I mentioned this before the planning commission, brewery is included as a principal permitted use here. Brewery, by definition, could include a mega brewery, it could, could be a Budweiser plant. The thinking of the planning commission and Mr. Cuman's report was that in the BG district, where we're allowing it, it's, there's not enough land, it really would never happen in that district. And so there was a level of comfort with the planning commission that, that would not create a problem. It was something that Mr. Stanbaugh, for his particular project, and we don't do this just for one property, but, but this was, you know, an initiative on his part, is trying to be licensed as a brewery, not because he wants to be a mega, you know, brewery, but because it allows him to do certain things that he described to you, and the, so that there's a fine distinctions between the different licenses he can get, and he wants to get the brewery license to be able to do some of the tasting and other things that he talked about. And we didn't want to, to reference the actual licenses in the code because they change. The definitions change, the titling of the licenses change. If we do that, then we create confusion. So this is the, sort of the generic word brewery kind of brings in what he's trying to do under those licenses. And again, just want you to understand that by adopting it, it would technically allow any type of brewery, which, again, the planning commission is, is comfortable with that just because in the BG district, it's just not, it doesn't have that type of land and is not really amenable to a large use, you know, a large brewery, like a large production brewery. But there are no limits under the licensing for the quantity of beer that can be produced at a brewery versus a microbrewery. Microbreweries have some limits, but they also have other limits that are not desirable for, for the Stanbaugh property. So, Mr. President, we're on tonight just to introduce ordinance number 314.
Okay, all right.
All right. Last month, next item, the GHD wastewater treatment plant study proposal. You've heard Mr. Wilson talk a little bit about the meeting that we had at the Maryland Department of the Environment. That dovetailed pretty nicely with the GHD proposal. You will recall that last month, you authorized that proposal to be released to the two developers, Jackson Ridge and the Villages, and that was done. And almost coincident with that, we all attended the meeting in MDE, so I think that the timing was, was fortunate. Since then, I know that the, both sets of developers have had discussions with Kelvin George at GHD. So the proposal, which was intended to be a draft, you know, from the start, they're looking to tweak it to get to a scope of the study that, that hopefully will reach consensus and be able to go forward at the expense of the developers. The Villages have provided considerably more detailed contact with Kelvin George to this point, but I saw today that Mr. Pyatt for Jackson Ridge sent comments, and I think there'll probably be a meeting in the upcoming days or weeks to try to sharpen that proposal to get it to the point where, where all sides are comfortable. So they're working towards that. It looks like it's going to include looking at the potential to do improvement and upgrade at the existing site, if possible, and if not, another site, and the types of, of plant that they would be, which has been discussed over the years, but it really needs to be looked at and studied and then recommended. So that seems like it's going in the right direction, and it's certainly making progress. And then finally, at our meeting with MDE, and as part of anticipating GHD moving towards preliminary design of a system that's suitable to the town, Mr. Chang, who was running the meeting for MDE, asked the town for a letter, asked Mayor Jones for a letter, and I think you all have a copy of the letter that we've composed, and we, and I've run that by Mr. Chang, so we think that'll be satisfactory for what he was asking for. The, the thing that is probably worthy of comment, some of it is just sort of background information that you would know, but when you look at the two projects together, they comp out to approximately 670 lots. So you, applying the 250 gallons per day per lot essentially generates a flow of 167,500 gallons. And that's important because that helps to look at the sizing that is needed. And the reason that this letter, I think, is, is important to MDE is that under the Water and Sewer Master Plan, the target size is .8 million gallons per day. But when we looked at it, and when Kelvin looked at it, that includes all of the land in the municipal growth area, land that's so far out at this point that it doesn't make sense to design and pay for at this point. It may or may not happen, but it's, it's very far off. So we, we looked at the flow that would be generated just from these two projects. We added that to the existing capacity of 2.2 million gallons per day, and it would basically, we need a, we need to design for a flow of .4. So that's what, that's what this means, and we're telling MDE, notwithstanding the fact that our master plan has this long, long-term horizon, as for planning purposes, what we're really looking to do is accommodate the growth that we know about, which are these two projects. And that, I understand, will allow Mr. Chang to, with, with that letter, to sort of adjust the target, and, and then, you know, we go forward from there. So it's kind of a step in that direction of assisting in this, in this design and the study that's happening. So I didn't really need council approval for that letter, that's more of an administrative thing, but the mayor wanted everybody to know what it said, make sure you understood it, if you had any questions, ask questions. And so that letter, I think, has been signed and will be mailed tomorrow or later this week. And, okay, so we'll go into the closed session then at the end of the meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, well, hopefully, have you ever heard anything from my data on our grant, have we, for the treatment plant? Our grant? Nothing. That's something that we definitely have to have. So, okay, we'll move right along to our deputy. Ryan?
Couple things under my time, but anyways, between the dates of March 25th, 2019, until March, or correction, April 21st, 2019, the sheriff's office responded to 51 calls for service to the town. The Union Bridge had those calls, only five calls reported for, pardon, for the following. On March 31st, at approximately 7:31 PM, deputies responded to the unit along to South Main Street, across the way domestic from progress. Upon arrival, it was learned that three individuals were at war fighting in the middle of the street by several of the neighbors. Subjects had flooded the area prior to the arrival of deputies, however, all parties were identified and were charged accordingly with the one, with one or more of the following charges, services of peace, loud noise, sort of the kind of secondary assault and malicious destruction of property. Case was closed by arrest. On April 1st, at approximately 1:24 PM, deputies responded to the block of West Broadway Street, referring to a missing person. Upon arrival, it was learned that a juvenile had missed the school bus in the morning hours and did not make it to school. Search of the area and residents yielded negative results, which, at which time the missing persons... missing person's report was filed and the juvenile was entered into the national database, which is the NCIC, as, as missing. At approximately 9:24 PM, the juvenile returned home safe and was taken out of the NCIC database after a brief interview was completed. Case was closed. On April 5th, at approximately 11:54 PM, deputies responded to the unit block of North Edelman Street, referenced to an overdose. Upon arrival, it was learned that the victim had snorted an unknown white powdery substance, suspected heroin, which caused the victim to overdose. The victim was transported to Carroll Hospital Center for additional treatment, and case was closed. On April 11th, at approximately 10:24 PM, deputies responded to the 100 block of North Main Street, referenced to a domestic. Upon arrival, it was learned that two individuals were involved in an argument which turned physical. Deputies were able to observe marks on one of the vic, or on, excuse me, on the victim, at which time the other subject was arrested and, for second degree assault, and was transported to Central Booking. Case was closed by arrest. On April 18th, at approximately 6:43 PM, deputies responded to the unit block of West Broadway Street, referenced to a domestic in progress. Upon arrival, it was learned that a physical assault involving, involving two juveniles. Due to the injury, injuries received from the assault, the victim was transported to Carroll Hospital Center for treatment. The suspect was arrested and transported to the Carroll County Sheriff's Office for processing. Case was closed by arrest. All the injuries were innocent until proven guilty in the court of law. Other notes, reminders are motorists that on April 26th, Jefferson Mill Road will be closed at the railroad crossing between Ladiesburg Road and Marilyn 75 in order for Marilyn Midland to upgrade the railroad crossing. Motorists should use the detour routes of Marilyn 75 with Quaker Hill Road while the works being completed, should be early weekend. On the 11th, several local organizations along with local businesses will be teaming up to hold several events for uptown. Motorists urge to use caution while traveling through the area as a large amount of pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic is expected that day. Another note, council has this in your folders. So this year, I'm doing little things, some of it differently. I'm actually going to keep you guys up to date for calls for service per quarter. So obviously, March was the end of the first quarter, so for calls for service, we were actually down from previous years. So in, correction, I'm sorry, for the first three months, we averaged 153 calls for service within the town, and the average of 13 reports being written out of those 153 calls. Over the, if you flip to the third page, calls for service for the year for '17, '18, and '19, we're actually down from last year by a lot, and also, we were, we were actually up from 2017 for calls for service by 10. And for the first quarter, we were actually, for reportable offenses, we were down by three reportable offenses from last year for the first quarter and five from '17. To just kind of give you, and obviously, you can see the graph as well. But other than that, that's all I have. Questions, comments?
All right. Thank you, Brian. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're allowing for public comments or concerns. Anybody want to come up? All right.
Hi, Sherri Thompson here on behalf of Dream Big Union Bridge. This past Saturday, we had our Easter egg hunt. We had 52 kids in attendance, so we feel that was a huge success and everybody had a good time. And we have our duck derby that is sponsored by Dream Big Union Bridge on May 11th in conjunction with the Railroad Museum's celebration of their Gold Spike 150th anniversary, I believe. So ducks are available for adoption if anyone's interested, and we are also going to have vendors there, craft vendors. So we're going to try that and see how that goes. And we will also have discount coupons to all the eateries here in town for people, it's like 10% off at Lendbo's, Buttersburg, and Originals. So we're going to be handing those out to, to the public, try to get some business, you know, some new people into those businesses. So we're still dreaming that.
Very, very good. Hey, y'all doing a good job. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We're trying. So if there's any needs, please let us know, because we're still going strong.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll start with the council report.
I had one call for a water issue, which was a bill, so I sent it to Town Hall. And our expo will be Thursday, October 24th, at the Fire Hall. We will be having an expo meeting on the, on the May 8th at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. We have a lot of new people interested in the expo this year, so it will be much bigger and much better. County agencies, Deputy Calusi's done a lot of work networking, so it will be awesome and a help.
Okay, great. Thank you. On the street agenda, we have started patching our mini potholes. In fact, there's, Kenny put about 20 and a half bags over here at the North Main Street. I met with White Pine, they have given us, we went over to the streets that we hope to pave this year. Oh, we haven't got a price back yet, so we're waiting on that. We will get the hole sooner or later, it just takes a little time, and our town is in pretty good shape with what some of them have been through, so we're staying on top of it as best we can. We've got an issue down in the park, water. I hope whenever it dries out, we'll be able to put some type of drains in to correct some of that, or at least help it. But with all the water, I know it's a, I use the park like real frequently, and it's inconvenient to have to wear boots, but that's what's going to require at times, so just have to, I can't help, don't, can't help what God gives us. All right, Edgar, what do you have?
We got, the Carroll Garden Club donated a check for $500 towards new drapes up the center, so it's going to help us out some, and that's about all I have.
Yes, I don't know if anyone has been up to the community center, but it really looks nice. It's got a, a really, a turnover, it's really, I'm really, we're really pleased with it. And it's certainly with the insulation and the drywall we put in, it's going to certainly help with our, a electric bill, or a fuel bill, I should say, so. Ellen?
Okay, there is some question about designating the parking enforcement person, and our lawyer has recommended that to eliminate any doubt, it would be better practice for us to do a vote reflected in the minutes to specifically designate the person to enforce all parking violations under our Parking Enforcement Code. And to that note, I, is it a motion I'm making?
Yes.
I'm making a motion that the mayor and council has designated Rachel, Rachel Philmeyer as our parking enforcement person, who started on March 18th of 2019.
You had a motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, all those, in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move it.
Um, the 11th, no, the, the 9th of April was the reading of the If I Were a Mayor Essays Contest for MML that we do every year. This year, we had a few less than last year, we had 2,711. However, Carroll County had more than they had in previous years, and Elmer Wolf had significantly more than they've had in previous years. I haven't gotten the results yet. As soon as I have them, I'll let you know. However, the awards ceremony will be on May the 10th at the, well, we meet at the MML office and then go down to the State House. So if one of our Elmer Wolf recipients, or writers should happen to be chosen as the top one for our district, it would be awesome. The more of us that can show up and give them our support, the better it is. Other than that, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. I think that wraps this up here, or is there any other, anything else from the public?
I have one question. At our Dream Big Meeting this month, we had Commissioner Bush in here, and one of, we had a question and answer thing, and one of the questions that people were asking and they're concerned about, where can they get training and information, should they be interested in running in future elections for town council? We think that that's what's holding a lot of people back because they don't know exactly what's required, and there seems to be some interest, but they're just afraid to think that's stuff they're not knowing. So is there training available?
There's, there's no real training before you start. However, the biggest and best thing you can do is show up to the meetings and pay attention and participate in the meetings. That's the, the best way to learn about what goes on in the council. If you don't show up for the meetings and you're not...
Well, I told them I would inquire and I, you know, send them...
And once you are, once you are elected, MML sends you out to the town, could treasure information to help you get started, and if you attend that first conference after you're elected, that's the best training you can possibly have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And in order to run, it is, all the rules and regulations are posted in the newsletter out of town.
And if you're elected, you're required to attend the meetings.
Yeah, you definitely have to be, you definitely have to make sure that you're willing to be here two nights a month because that is required.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep.
All right.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting and go into closed session.
There, you got a second?
And the purpose is for legal advice relating...
Legal advice for...
Solar...
Related to, thank you, John. I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting and go into closed session for the purpose of legal advice regarding the proposed solar farm.
I'll second that.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
Need to vote on that.
Your motion, yeah. Yeah, second, first, and fourth, we're done.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Time, all those opposed? So carry on.